Okay,各位委员
Good afternoon, members. We have formed a quorum for the special meeting of the Health Services Panel. I'll invite the secretary to speak first. And then colleagues, if you would like to ask questions, you may now press the request to speak button. Yes, please press the button. You can hear me? Non-members, non-panel members may also ask questions. All right. Secretary, please. For our meeting, we've only got one item. And that's about the measures to prevent and control COVID-19 in Hong Kong. So, secretary, please walk us through the paper. Thank you. Well, since the outbreak of the COVID-19, the government has been following closely the development. We took decisive actions and we have launched appropriate measures to deal with the situation. In light of the latest progress, we have been re-examining our measures and facilities, and we check the feasibility and we make timely adjustments. On the 20th of March, we briefed the HSP in relation to our preventive and control measures in relation to COVID-19. The government has had new developments and progress in including the latest measures introduced in the past few days. I want to take this opportunity to give you an introduction. While the outbreak continues and rapidly it is spreading throughout the world. Recently, for the imported cases in Hong Kong, there has been an obvious increase. Since March, over seventy percent are imported cases or people have a travel history during the incubation period or they are the close contacts of people with a travel history. To protect our population and to safeguard our health system, our main focus in our control work is on the two points following. That is, we would like to prevent importation of cases from overseas. Second, we want to prevent the spread locally. So, on the basis of public health, on the 25th of March, we have introduced immigration controls. First, non-Hong Kong residents from other countries or cities coming to Hong Kong by air will not be allowed to come here. For non-Hong Kong residents from the mainland Taiwan and Macau, if they have been to other places in the past fourteen days, they cannot come to Hong Kong. No transit at the airport. And fourthly, Macau, Taiwan residents, travelers coming to Hong Kong, both Hong Kongers and non-Hong Kongers, have to be subject to a fourteen-day compulsory quarantine. And then, on the 6th of April, we declared that there will be a further extension until further notice. And in other words, travelers who are not Hong Kong residents from other places will not be allowed to come to Hong Kong or to transit here. For those who come in, they are subject to compulsory quarantine measures, except the exempted people. This is to prevent the local spread of the disease. In terms of enhanced surveillance, we have already got the enhanced surveillance laboratory scheme. For those arriving in Hong Kong without symptoms, they are offered a free test on the... Starting on the 29th of March, it extended to all who come to Hong Kong without symptoms under CAP-599E. And then, on the 26th of March at the AWE, we set up the temporary specimen collection test center so as to speed up the collection of the samples and to provide a test. Starting from today, the Department of Health in accordance with CAP-599A, we make it mandatory, that is, anybody arriving in the Hong Kong airport without symptoms will have to go to AWE where we have the temporary specimen collection center. They have to give us their deep-throated saliva specimens so as to test for COVID-19. Bearing in mind that we have got more imported cases who have had a history of traveling in the UK. So, starting from tomorrow, those coming by air from the UK without symptoms will still have to go to the AWD temporary center to give a deep-throated saliva specimen and wait for the result. If it is tested positive, arrangements will be made to send the patient to hospital. Close contacts will be arranged to go to specified quarantine centers for compulsory quarantine. For those tested negative, they can go home or they can go to specified venues to finish the remaining part of the fourteen-day quarantine period. To reduce social distancing, this is also important for us to ease the spread of the disease. On the 27th of March, in accordance with CAP-599, we've introduced two new regulations. They are Prevention and Control of Disease Requirements and Directions, Business and Premises Regulation 599F as well as Prevention and Control of Disease Prohibition on Group Gathering Regulation, CAP-599G. We hope that we can have fewer activities where there are group gatherings. And then, CAP-599 empowers me as a secretary for Food and Health to give directives by way of get such a notice so that we can ask the businesses to stop... The, I mean, in relation to those who are mainly or solely supplying liquor, to stop doing so. And I can also impose other restrictions. And then, under CAP-599F, as a result of having get such a notice, I have already issued six notices or directions. And they would cover the mode of operation of the scheduled premises. In light of the development of the outbreak and in order to make it consistent in relation to the date of effectiveness, under 599F and G, I have come up with the latest directions. For bonds, clubs, among other catering industries, I have extended the related period to the 23rd of April. And then, for 599F, for high-risk massage parlors and beauty parlors, they will be treated the same like other nine groups. That is, they have to stop for business. They have to close for business from zero-zero hours on the 10th of April up to the 23rd of April. In other words, for 599F, we have got eleven categories of businesses that have to close for business. There have been some earlier announcements in the past. And then, for clubhouses, mahjong and chincau activities have to stop. And whenever practicable, anybody going there should wear the surgical mask and you have to take temperatures from the visitors and hand sanitizers have to be provided. All such requirements are still valid. Earlier on, under 599G, on the 28th of March, I had a get such a notice saying that between 29th of March and the 11th of April, other than exempted categories, you cannot have public gatherings comprising of four people or more. In light of the latest developments earlier today, I've also issued a direction so that this will be extended to the 23rd of April as well. Under 599F and 599G, when it comes to law enforcement, well, I would like to say that it is satisfactory. 599F, since the first day of implementation up to the 7th of April, twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-two inspections were carried out, one thousand six hundred and seventy-four pieces of advice given. And then, for the scheduled premises, which are subject to restrictions, one thousand eight hundred forty-four visits were made. Generally speaking, we have seen compliance. Each advices have been given. I would like to mention that yesterday, in Shangchampu, there were two catering premises. They did not keep the right distance between the tables. There is 1.5 meters or some form of sort of separation. So, the FHD is applying for a court order so that we can issue a summons to the person in charge of the two premises. Under 599G, and we know that we have to step up the inspections as of zero-zero hours on the 7th of April, nine hundred and sixty-six cases were referred to us that is in relation to non-compliance. Nineteen penalty tickets have been issued. All the departments are also responsible for the proper places in indoor places. We have got twelve thousand seven hundred and eleven inspections, one thousand eight hundred thirty verbal advice given. On the 7th of April and 8th of April, during the small hours, were discovered two bars that were operating in breach of the law. The places were crowded and they were selling liquor to the clients there. This will enhance the risk of local transmission. This is most irresponsible. The police will not rule out prosecuting the persons in charge as well as the clients. I will urge everybody to meet the requirements of the two regulations. Exercise self-discipline for your own sake, for others' sake. Avoid going out and avoid gatherings, social gatherings, meal gatherings. Keep a proper social distance from each other so that we can ease the spread of COVID-19 in the community. As to the concerns of the industries, well, please bear in mind public health and please meet the requirements imposed. I will say that we urge everybody to keep good personal and environmental hygiene. Now, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, we have colleagues from other bureaus and departments. We are happy to take questions from members. Thank you. Yes? I hope the secretary will give us a copy of her speech. Yes, could you? Thank you. We've got thirty-five colleagues who would like to ask questions, but we've only got one hour up to 2:00 PM. We must hand over the venue to the special FC meeting. So, if we are having three minutes each, we can only have at most eighteen members asking questions. Let me read out the names. Joseph Lee, Claudia Mopier, Chan Peter Mo, KK Quo, Vincent Zhang, Junice Ho, Frankie Ye, Chan Chi Chuen, Lu Chong Hong, Pun Shiu Ping, Elizabeth Quod, Junice Ho, Stephen Ho, Ho Kai Ming, Chan Ho Yen. That's all. Sixteen of you. And Shi Kafai. I'm not sure whether you will have your turn to speak. All right, the first would be... Sorry. Let me say again. Joseph Lee, Claudia Mopier, Chan, Peter Mo, KK Quo, Vincent Zhang, Stephen Ho, Frankie Ye, Chan Chi Chuen, Lu Chong Hong, Pun Shiu Ping, Elizabeth Quod, Junice Ho, Ho Kai Ming, Chan Chi Chuen, Chan Ho Yen, Shi Kafai. Yes, yes, please. If you take up the floor again, we are running out of time. Usually, I respect your decisions and generally speaking, three minutes would be the minimum. But then, all members would like to ask questions and we all press the buttons at the same time. Would you like to cut the time further so that at least each of us will get a minute or two? Of course, we can't blame anybody if we are late. We were late. Two minutes. One minute for the question, one minute for the answer from the secretary. Sometimes, it is not fair to the secretary if you use up all your time. Christopher Ching, how come that you didn't call my name? Because you are the twenty-ninth on the list. All right. Two minutes each, so please be conscious about the time management. A few more members may ask questions. Shi Kafai, Fernando Ching, Paul Chan, Roy Kwong, Lo Wei Quo, Wong Ting Kwong. I'm not sure whether Wong Ting Kwong will get to his turn to ask questions. So, the first one will be Joseph Lee, two minutes. Please leave one minute for the secretary to answer. I'm not sure I can finish what I want to say. It is important to fight the epidemic at the front line. But, um, but what about the PPEs of the HA? It seems that the supply is tight, one month's stock left. We can understand that. For N95 respirators, you have to reduce them. For goggles and face shields, they have to be reduced as well. And then, you carry, the staff members are left to themselves to carry out their cleansing and disinfection.
Some clusters are constantly modifying the infection control guidelines. There are many types of PPE, so how can the staff adapt for the tier-two isolation wards? What about the negative pressure facilities, ventilation facilities, and changing facilities? The nurse station is very close to patients and all these are left not resolved. Well, I'm not done yet. For the N95 respirators, they are not allowed to be used at the tier-two wards. So, what can the healthcare professionals do? Some frontline workers are saying that during certain aerosol generating procedures, nurses are not allowed to put on the respirators, only doctors can wear them. And visits have not been allowed in recent weeks. And a lot of family members of patients called in to find out about the situation. This is something the nurses understand, but they had to spend a lot of time dealing with the calls. Dr. Ko? Thank you. Thank you very much for the question. In terms of PPE, this is a matter of focus for us all along in the recently announced figures with the efforts of everyone. The stockpiles have somewhat improved recently. However, the supply of N95 respirators is still tight. But at the moment, we do not recommend reusing the N95 respirators. Callum Mo, thank you. Secretary, I'm not trying to pick holes, but the fact is, the lockdown at Wuhan has been lifted today and we must reduce the flow of the influx of people. According to official statistics, fifty-five thousand people will leave Wuhan today. Twenty thousand would go to the Pearl River Delta. Some would return to Hangzhou, Beijing, etc. They can choose to come to Hong Kong. We are still open for visiting and to see family, for people to see family members. How can we remove these unnecessary risks? Why do you still refuse a full border closure? Chairman? Like I said, for those with Wuhan or Hubei endorsements, they are still not allowed to enter Hong Kong. At the moment, there are no visitors with Wuhan endorsements. Very often, those who come back are Hong Kong residents or Hong Kongers. Chairman? Of course, we cannot say no to people of our own or to Hong Kong people. We are talking about the category of visitors who are seeing their family members. How would you find out if they don't admit or if they don't tell you that they have visited Wuhan in the last fourteen days? How could you identify them? The only solution is a border closure. As for visitors with a Wuhan or Hubei endorsement, they have been barred. Well, you are repeating what you have said. The visitor endorsements were no longer issued. I asked a question at the Finance Committee's special meeting. The answers were selective. Three months ago, the HA said that the stockpile of face masks was at three months. There was no problem. And the number of isolation beds could increase to fourteen hundred in a very short time. That was the answer. That was what happened three months ago. And the lack of complete information was not their fault. A lot of lawmakers and doctors are concerned about the fact that the middle management is restricting the use of PPE and non-emergencies, surgeries, and endoscopy services were cut back. So, that is the instruction from the middle management. Many lawmakers are concerned about waiting time. So, my first question, are you going to inject funds to expand the private-public partnership program? For example, by diverting certain cancer or other services to private hospitals? For the PPP, we have an allocation of $10 billion. We know that at the HA, there are lots of non-emergency procedures and surgeries that have been suspended. The HA has started a study. All right, thank you. My second question for the HA. Has the HA considered using other hospitals such as Hong Kong Children's Hospital, North Atlanta Hospital, and TCHU Hospital, and the unused wards and beds as tier-two isolation beds? Yes or no? Dr. Ching? We would consider all feasible options, but it would depend on the conditions of patients as well as the potential impact on other services. The secretariat just reminded me that apart from the names of members I read out, we could accommodate about four more members. Dr. Wong Ting Kwong, Che Wai Chuen, Yu Si Wen, Hoden Chow, Chen Chen Ying, finally, Dr. Chen Chong Tai, but I'm not totally sure. Mr. Chow Sma? Secretary? There are a lot of new messages. I hope you can answer my questions. In terms of the deep-throated saliva tests for inbound travelers, would it just take place at the airport or at all BCPs? Ms. Claudia Mopier asked about the possibility of those from Beijing or Guangzhou, or they are Beijing or Guangzhou residents, but they were stuck in Wuhan and now they are going back. They certainly do not carry Wuhan or Hubei endorsements. Is there any possibility that these people could visit Hong Kong through other kinds of endorsements? And of the BCPs, with the exception of the airport, would the treatment be different at different BCPs? For example, would wristbands be distributed at the airport? Well, WhatsApp or WeChat would be used for location tracking at other BCPs? So, what would be, is there any difference in the treatment of inbound visitors at the three BCPs? For the DHS work at the two land BCPs and the airport, specimen bottles would be distributed to all inbound visitors. The same question, I would defer to the Director of Hygiene. We discussed the strategy with the relevant experts and committees for all inbound travelers at the airport. They would be given a specimen bottle for deep-throated saliva specimen for land BCPs. With the resumption of transport services in Hubei Province, we had a discussion with the panel of experts. We would adopt a wristband approach, so the approach will be different, right? For those from Hubei Province, they would be given a specimen bottle to bring home. Dr. KK Quo? First of all, I condemn Mrs. Regina Ye. What she said was appalling. In 2003, the healthcare professionals were heroes. And now, they, well, and this time, they spoke their heart by asking the government to close the borders and yet they were condemned. Secretary, can you stop adopting a piecemeal approach? Can you tell us when you will seal, you will close the borders for everyone returning from Wuhan? The treatment must align with that at the government. The deep-throated saliva test result must be negative before they should be let go. We have a lot of patients waiting to be admitted to hospital in the past. They would have to wait for up to a few days. Why aren't you opening up more venues, including the HACC in Wan Chai? In New York, London, and even Wuhan, they have temporary hospitals, so why has the government refused that? We have said that a lot of hotels are vacant. They are ideal venues for temporary accommodation for several types of visitors, including the former hotel at TSTE's who laid off all their staff. Would the government actively identify these hotels with a lot of vacant rooms? And if, if you don't, what is the reason? First of all, for non-Hong Kong residents, basically, they have been barred from entering through the airport. For testing on individuals with no symptoms, well, they should be held until the results are out. At the DH press release, it was explained that, starting from tomorrow, those returning from the UK who are high-risk individuals would be subject to such treatment and gradually other types of people would be allowed to go home after the results are available. Mr. Vincent Chang? Well, Mrs. Ye is not here, so it is not very appropriate to launch such vicious attacks on her. In terms of the home quarantine arrangements, it is one of the reluctant options we have now. Some people are self-isolating in old residential buildings, but there are a number of confirmed cases already and they are concerned. The, at older buildings, sometimes there is no disinfection or cleaning. So, at the communal areas of older residential buildings, can infection be carried out by the government? I would defer to the DH on the disinfection work of buildings with confirmed cases. Dr. Chan? For the homes of confirmed patients, the FHD would arrange for disinfection. As for the communal areas, information would be provided for the management company to take action. But there is no such work at the moment, so can the HAD provide coordination support? I believe various departments can discuss the matter with the Home Affairs Department. Thank you. Any further question? Next, Mr. Stephen Ho. Thank you. I'm concerned about the enforcement of CAP-599F and 599G. Apart from the police force, the enforcement capabilities of other departments. Some lawmakers claim that they enjoy privileges. This is something the police often encounters, so they might be experienced, but I'm not so sure for other departments. A lawmaker claimed in a bar that they were holding a shareholders' meeting, but they were only for shareholders. They half-shut the gates, but some members of the public claim that the premises were still operating. So, for such gray areas, what would be the treatment by the government? For certain lawmakers and merchants, they provided false information to the police and government. And the public's impression with that is that the laws are lax or that the lawmakers would enjoy privileges or that the enforcement efforts are not strict. So, if the number of prosecutions stay low, then the epidemic control results would be dubious. Can you clarify whether, clarify the situation and whether lawmakers have privileges? Well, obviously, the answer is no. Well, some, some members might feel that they have privileges, so you should be very careful. Under the regulations, do lawmakers enjoy privileges? Thank you. For premises such as bars, I reiterate that they are high-risk venues of virus transmission. Public places refer to places that could be entered by the public or part of the public. Can you tell us whether lawmakers enjoy privileges or exemptions? Are you going to investigate? If not, that means they have privileges and that the enforcement efforts are lax. Your time's up. Next, Mr. Frankie Ye.
Thank you, Chair. My question is quite similar to Stephen Ho's. So, when a lawmaker leaves the LC complex, is she or he entitled to any privileges? Well, in the past, during the social unrest, somebody was hurt crying out aloud that he or she was a lawmaker, etc., etc. Today, we have got some information. Well, there is still... Well, there is this minister, the health minister in Scotland. Well, he was forced to step down because he breached the ban on gathering. And another case was that somebody was downgraded in New Zealand for doing something similar. So what is your view on this matter?
Deputy Secretary can answer this question. Well, in fact, in relation to the schedule one of development regulation, there is the prohibition on group gathering. There are twelve exemptions. So if you are meeting the requirements, then a lawmaker will also be exempted. One being that the proceedings at the legal would be exempted. There is, there is something that you do at the legal. What about outside the legal? Then you have to judge in accordance with the other eleven scenarios that are exempted. Ray Chen. Well, under CAP five-double-nine, five different regulations have been introduced. Two about quarantines, one about requirements and directions for businesses and premises, and then prohibition on group gathering, et cetera. Well, in fact, it's supposed to be negative vetting, but we haven't had the chance to deal with them. We didn't even have the chance to call a meeting, to ask questions, to seek clarifications. So Chair, I will ask you and I'll ask the administration to do the following. For the newly introduced regulations under CAP five-double-nine, we need to call special meetings so that we can ask questions, we can give our views. Yes, they are temporary. There will be a deadline, but then everybody is unclear. I hope the frontline officers will attend. I hope the S, the Department of Health, Department of Justice will attend. Now, for the business and premises regulation, I think it's supposed that the person in charge or the owner should be penalized. But what about having five customers at a table? It is said that they will be punished as well. Is that the case? And then public place, the definition is unclear. For the twelve exempted scenarios, the fourth one is most unclear. That is, group gathering at a place of work for the purposes of work. What about location shooting? Is it a matter of a place of work for the purposes of work? I think you have failed to give us a clear understanding. We haven't even got the chance to ask questions. How can you expect the citizens to know exactly what is involved? Well, for the new regulations, if you have questions, certainly we'll try our best to answer the questions. We have already come up with Q and As covering different scenarios, and they are available on different platforms, but we'll do our best to answer your questions. Mr. Lo Chung-hung. Well, Tanya Chen, the lawmaker, had a gathering in this small hours at a bar. It is resentful. You relax about yourselves and then you're being unclear when it comes to the question. Well, for the opposition camp, they will only be interested in the outbreak on the mainland. They have been vilifying the mainland authorities, making accusations of holding back the truth. It seems that they don't care about the outbreak in Europe and in America. I think the epic center is in the USA and the UK. It seems that they haven't seen it at all. Now, as to the assessment of the outbreak, does the secretary have any figures? Have you analyzed the imported cases for the past month or two weeks? What about in number of cases imported from the mainland? How many from Europe and USA? In particular, the two major powers, the UK and the USA. Which country stands out most in relation to the number of imported cases? Then we can see which country has the highest risk. You will screen those returning from the UK, but not the US. There are over forty thousand cases. So is it evidence-based? Is it scientifically-based? D of H can give you the figures. Yes, Dr. Chen, please. For the past two weeks, that is between the fifth of March and seventh of April, for the imported cases, sixty-five point four percent of the total cases were imported. One percent are the close contacts. As to the countries where the returnees have visited, two hundred and sixty-four from the UK, forty-six from the US, eighteen from France, Spain, nine. So the figures for the past two weeks. What about the percentage? Now, time is up. Can I get the information afterwards? Secretary, please supplement afterwards.
Mr. Poon. Well, we cannot take the matter lightly. Experts have advised to practice social distancing. The government has introduced prohibition on gatherings. Unfortunately and regrettably, a lawmaker has attended a gathering at the bar. Now, the prohibition will be extended. You rely on two departments to carry out inspections. Do they have enough manpower to do so? And then, we have got over ten thousand buildings involved in home quarantine. I think we have got a special team to carry out the work. Many people have lost their jobs. Can we not have temporary jobs openings so that you can share the burden of disinfecting such buildings as well? Well, under CAP five-nine-nine G, I think more departments may enforce the law. Mr. Chen can elaborate. Yes, Mr. Chen, please. According to the regulation, the Director of Health can authorize public officers, the police, the D of H, AFCD, FDHD, LCSD, HAD, HD, have all got officers being authorized. Elizabeth Qu, prohibition on group gathering. Nobody would object that. It is an unusual time. Everybody has to abide by it. Tanya Chen attended a bar gathering with forty people, claiming that they were having a meeting and yet they were drinking. Even when you have a chess game, you get a ticket. Does she enjoy privileges? Well, the civic party does not attend today's meeting. If they say that they were having a meeting, they were not having a group meeting, and they were not drinking, why don't they disclose the CCTV footage? If they don't, can the government ask for that? If they don't, I think the civic party should apologize to the public. We are concerned about the foreign domestic helpers for the prohibition on group gathering regulation. Can we ask them to stay home and then the employers pay them for staying home? Secretary. All right, you same. Dr. Qu for the question. We have read the news story. Under CAP five-nine-nine G and F, we are going to carry out an investigation. Your second question is about the case of FDH. For CAP five-nine-nine G, we have provisions about gatherings. We are worried that maybe foreign domestic helpers would like to have gatherings, especially on the rest days. So whenever we have our holidays, our law enforcement officers will watch out and will hand out pamphlets just to advise them against scheduling. Of course, they may stay home. They can stay at home. But then, we understand this point, and the Labor Department has also said that they would like to go out. Many FDHs would like to go out. So against such a context, I would like to have more proper education. We did invite the Labor and Welfare Bureau to be represented here, but nobody has come. Junius Ho. I pick up the point made by Elizabeth Qu for the prohibition on group gathering. Would the department consider the following? If we have this case, which is obvious, since there are so many of them, other than issuing a ticket, will they be treated like the returnees so that they are subject to home quarantine? I think probably that's more effective. If anybody breaks the law knowingly, and there are so many of them in an enclosed environment, and there is a high risk of spreading the disease. Now, other than a two thousand dollar fine, if the offender has to be homebound for fourteen weeks, I think it is going to help. So are you going to consider this? And then for the cross-boundary drivers, prime between Hong Kong and the mainland. Now, you said that they need to come up with a health certificate. Are you going to help them? If they can't even deliver or transport the goods, we're going to suffer. Who will take the question? First of all, whether it be five-nine-nine F or five-nine-nine G, they have their respective penalties. For the catering businesses, as were scheduled premises, the persons in charge will be subject to maximum fine of fifty thousand dollars or six months imprisonment in the case of an offense. For gatherings, twenty-five thousand dollars fine or six months imprisonment. And they may also be made to pay a fixed penalty ticket. So we're watching the developments closely. For cross-boundary drivers, I understand that the Transport and Housing Bureau is handling the matter. Next, Mr. Hu Kai-ming. Thank you, Madam Chair. KK Qu asked for protective guns. He's from the Civic Party. But what about Tanya Chen's case? It's not going to deal with that. For Tanya Chen's cluster, it brings up an issue. If you are rich and you can have a venue exclusively for yourselves, then does it mean that your rich can pay for the exclusive use of a venue? Then you can shutter the place and then you can gather as many as forty people and be free of any sort of responsibilities? Well, will there be an outbreak? I'm concerned about her health. I hope she has good health. So for the Tanya Chen cluster, I want to know if the bureau will follow this up. If you just close the doors, can you still have forty people within an exclusive venue? I'll ask our deputy secretary to speak. Let me talk about the difference between the two pieces of regulation. No, no, no. I need to explain. For five-double-nine F, it covers all the catering businesses. Do you know what's meant by having the place exclusive to yourself? Well, for catering businesses, it's not confined to public places. Any business venues providing catering service will be subject to five-nine-nine F. So for restaurants, bars, et cetera, for the tables, for customers at most, at one point five meters apart. So that would cover chartering a place, right? And then for prohibition on gathering, that's in relation to public places. So can they claim that it is a private place and they are exempted? It depends on the circumstances. Understand that the law enforcement agencies will look into matter. Are you going to prosecute her?
Mr. Long Chi-Chen. I want to pick up Stephen Ho's point about privileges. Now, for you to bring prosecution. Now, you are prosecuting an onlooker of a chess game, an old man. Now, for Tanya Chen, they are having group, they were having a group gathering, over forty people. It's a breach of the law. She said that she was having a meeting in a capacity as a lawmaker. Secretary, you haven't clarified. Now, for a lawmaker to convene a meeting within a bar, is it a group gathering? Is it breaching the law? Now, the DS said that there will be an investigation, which department? Can you tell us immediately? Yes, which department, please? The police. The police will investigate. My understanding is that we have read the news story for five-double-nine F and G. Powers have been given to the law enforcement officers. And certain procedures are stated there. The police will be responsible for following this up.
Is the convention of a meeting by a legal member in a bar, is this against the prohibition of group gatherings? Mr. Chen has explained the relevant regulations and exemptions. Can you give me a direct answer? Deputy Secretary. In terms of exemptions, if a legal member conducts a group gathering for the proceedings in the legal, then it will be an exemption. So doesn't mean she has reached the law. Well, she has admitted that she was convening a meeting. It is hard to give an answer, I believe, because this is at the matter of, in the hands of the Hong Kong Police Force. Ms. Rebecca Chan.
Under five-nine-nine G prohibits group gatherings with more than four people. What is the objective of CAP five-nine-nine G? My belief is that it is for infection control and to cut the local transmission train chain. We saw a lawmaker instituting a group gathering in a bar. This was just one of the cases. On the thirty-first of March, there was a gathering outside a certain MTR station. And there were district councillors and lawmakers, and some of them are here today.
Secretary, you should not just tell us the exemptions under the law. As the chief of the bureau, the CHP was set up in the aftermath of SARS to deal with infectious diseases from a common sense perspective. Can you give us an answer? Stop just talking about the laws. Would such gatherings be in line with the legislative intent? Secretary. To be honest, can you tell the public what is right and what is wrong? In order to minimize social gatherings and to maintain social distancing, we introduce CAP five-nine-nine F and CAP five-nine-nine G. Like you just said, the purpose is to reduce the risk of transmission and to disrupt the transmission chain. We now have a legal framework and basis, and hopefully we can minimize such social gatherings. We call upon the public to be disciplined, or else with the new confirmed cases, this would be beyond the capacity of our healthcare system. We have been making good progress. A lot of members have been very brief in their speeches, so we can cater for a few more members. Mr. Ronix Chan, Dr. Chen Zhong-Tai, Mr. Dari Lee, Mr. Christopher Chang, Mr. Alsmack. Mr. Shu Ka-Fai, thank you. Secretary. Yesterday, together with thirteen unions of the beauty industry, we arranged a meeting at Legal at three thirty PM to discuss how the beauty industry can enhance their expertise in order to help stop the transmission chain for the virus. In the past, we saw that in the cases, staff were affected, were infected by the customers. And the beauty industry has always been very professional in terms of maintaining hygiene. And apart from taking body temperature and wearing masks, they would dispose of the linens or beddings. And and you are now closing down the beauty salon, so the sector is suffering. So you should provide full subsidy in terms of rents as well as salaries. And for the goods they purchase from the suppliers, they could not be sold, so you should provide subsidy as well. You should tackle the roots. Even if you close down the shops, what are you going to do with the gathering crowds? For, for the, for Tanya Chen and the representative from the catering industry. Well, this is not Well, um it this is not about money. Slapping a fine is not enough. This is about public impression. Uh yet yesterday, um there were eighty to ninety people at an establishment in Chischa. You should send a message that people should not gather, for example, public figures. The government should um point out clearly whether um they were right or wrong. Secretary, Chairman, with the um legal framework, um we would discourage gatherings. Doctor Fernando Chang, the probation camp um are all trying to um send out the same message. And the uh and Miss Tanya Chan was meeting the catering industry to discuss what they can do in in the face of the epidemic and to um ask for anti epidemic measures from the government. And apparently, the pro Beijing um camp um thought they can, they could capitalize on this incident. But have they done anything? Did you meet your sectors and people in need? Did you take part in meetings with more than four people? You should um be honest with yourselves. This meeting should have been about public health and whether our epidemic control measures have been effective and how we can offer recommendations for the government. And yet, um you are making things political and try to smear your opposition. Well, I saw Frankie Yig the other day. He was um with representatives from the trade. There was some, there were more than ten people in the press conference. So would that be, should should that be allowed? You should just shut up. And this is a message for the pro Beijing camp or loyalists. The taking of deep throat saliva specimen for inbound travelers is necessary. And you are saying that some uh you you should, you you would wait three days before you ask about the result. We are talking about people who would enter the community. For those from the mainland, they don't have to wear wristbands. So should you improve your arrangements, Mister Po Jie? Mister Shu Ka Fei. Chairman, Fernando Chang mentioned the name of Frankie Yig. At that time, um they were um in groups of four outside and there were police officers. No gatherings were allowed um with more than four people. I said I I was with thirteen people, but we but we were working in the legal complex. So you should not confuse both scenarios, Mister Po Jie. So um it should have been a straightforward um uh case. So a two thousand dollar fine should be enough. But we are talking about someone who is not afraid to go to jail. So what could be done? For the and for the uh anti mask law, um we could understand what um happened, but this is a life or death situation. We should send the right messages to the society. The relevant person is a barrister and a lawmaker. She she cited the definition of a public place and the discharge of duties via uh or proceedings of legal. We should clarify the issue. Some law lawmakers are forced to um change their approach and some people um did not dare give out face masks. This is unfair. We do not know how much longer we will have to deal with the epidemic. What is the definition of a public place? Despite past court cases, now the government should clarify whether a bar uh with the with the doors half shut um would constitute a public place. Would the administration uh make use of regulations? And the evidence should be collected, the CCTV footage should be retrieved, and the evidence and information should be produced. And apart from the two thousand dollar fine, and the operator of the premises could be held liable and he or she could go to jail. So all these should be clarified. While the the opposition has been criticizing different matters, I think we should provide more information to the public in general. Next, Mister Roy Kwong, Mister Loai Kwok. Thank you. Uh finally, the government um introduced a thematic website on the coronavirus. Um the website is rather comprehensive, uh but um one important function function should be to dispel rumors. There are lots of rumors about the coronavirus. And there are a lot of incorrect messages or rumors about the government's work. The government should make use of this website to dispel such rumors. A simple Q and A approach is not sufficient. Um you should tackle certain issues or rumors head on. With the new measures, I have received some questions from the trades. For example, for beauty sala- beauty parlors, they are asked to close for a time. What about barber shops? Some barber shops provide beauty services. So um if they uh stop providing beauty services, can they continue to provide the barber services? And same for um manicure and pedicure services. The government should promote this on their website. Secretary, under the law, um there are definitions of what constitutes a beauty parlor. So I would defer to Mister Chan for details. The services you mentioned um are covered under the laws. Mister Chan, a beauty parlor um refers to establishments that mainly uh to provide beauty services for those providing a manicure of uh pedicure services. They would found the definition, but not barber shops. Uh Mister Wang Ting Kwong. Thank you. Mister Ray Chan said that the relevant um laws could not be scrutinized in time. I completely agree with him. But the um fault lies in the fact that the House Committee Chairman is yet to be elected. So that might be the responsibility of the presiding chairperson. The relevant regulations under cap five nine nine are obviously designed to safeguard health in face of the epidemic. As lawmakers and well learned individuals, they should understand this very well. At the earlier uh Finance Committee Special Meeting, um a meet uh a lawmaker asked people to stay home, but she was found to be staying in a bar instead. So um sh- she had a brain tumor. So I urge her to take care of her health. She should not um jeopardize other people's health and um in fact others. That would be very irresponsible. According to cap five nine nine, um is there um retro's retroactive power? Or um would a charge only be late um if a person is caught at the scene? In terms of enforcement offices, um any breaches of the regulations would require evidence collection and prosecution consideration. Next, Mister um Tony Chan, Mister Yu Si Wen. Thank you.
For the compulsory quarantine, I think they need to be isolated. Earlier on, it was said that the government was interested in uh using the hotel rooms. But at the end of the day, the government didn't do so. Want to know why the government is not considering the idea? So that the um people under quarantine orders don't have to go around to look for a hotel room. Are you still abandoning the idea, Secretary? I thank Mister Yu for the question.
Well, many people have said that perhaps we should use the hotel rooms for quarantine purpose. We need to be clear about the objective. We did consider the idea. We did visit some hotels. First of all, our quarantine facilities uh have still got uh places, though it is tight. For those returnees who are subject to a fourteen day compulsory quarantine at home, they may also stay at a hotel to serve their purpose. Now, it has been said that maybe we can use a hotel to allow those who have submitted a specimen for the test to wait. And then they get the test result before returning home to have home quarantine. We are open to this idea. In the past, we did approach certain hotels. But then when they became aware of the uh pub they use, they might not be too willing. They said that they could allow us to use the hotel, but then they would not be providing any service. They won't have staff because staff members may not be willing to do so. So there are difficulties. Holden Chow, thank you, Madam Chair. Tanya Chan, a lawmaker, took the lead to breach the regulation. She had a group gathering at a bar. She's also the convener of the Pen Democrats. Now she took the lead in breaching the regulation, having a group gathering at a bar. He's and she's enhancing the risk of spreading the disease. I think we urge the government to take the matter seriously. I find it odd of this observation. For the Democrats, we have only got uh just a handful of them. They were not here. Maybe they would like to distance themselves from her at critical moments or they would share the responsibility. I think probably this is in line with their approach and their style. Madam Chairman, a question for Secretary. Well, this is a health services panel. We're here to talk about anti epidemic efforts. The Royalists are smearing us. They are politicizing it. I did come to press the button to speak. Now you talked about the Democratic Party. Are you politicizing it or are you interested in anti epidemic work? Uh time is precious. Let's go to the questions directly. Mister Chow, do you have a question? Yes, indeed, I have. Well, the prohibition on group gathering regulation is still valid. Many catering establishments are being affected. Yes, we're expecting a second round of anti epidemic fund. But do you have any assistance for them in a more direct way? In particular, help the staff members. Can you make sure that the assistance will go to the staff members? Secretary, I don't think you have got time to answer the question. Next, uh Ronica Chan, thank you. As a public figure, I think we need to set a good example. That's why we are all wearing a mask attending a meeting. If anybody claims privileges, whether it's a government official, an ex-col member or a legal member, we need the government to clarify immediately. And then for the foreign domestic helpers, they are gathering. I think it is a risk. You need to consider subsidizing the employers so as to encourage the helpers to stay home, but of course, they are free to choose. Every day, we have confirmed cases. I think the highest risk um is the moment between confirmation and admission to hospital. What is the duration of the time lag? Can we not be given an undertaking so as to reduce the gap as much as possible, so as to allay our worries? Secretary, between confirmation and admission or by hospital, the time lag should be as, the time lag is getting shorter and shorter. In the past, there were confirmed patients who have to wait at home, in particular, those without symptoms. So they got a sample or a specimen bottle and then they waited at home. When they became aware that they have been confirmed, then they would have to wait for the hospital authority to arrange for isolation bed. The H A has tried its utmost to reduce the time lag as much as possible. Perhaps the H A would like to add to the answer. For the latest position today, we haven't got anybody waiting for admission. Uh we are grateful to our colleagues for their hard efforts. So currently, nobody has to wait at home. We are able to get a bed as soon as the H A is notified. Doctor Zheng Zhong Tai. Well, some housewives asked me to ask this question on their behalf. They want the administration to explain clearly. Is it reasonable to have such um prohibition orders? We have many more imported cases arising from returnees from overseas. Yes, the Hong Kongers, they're entitled to come to come back to Hong Kong. But is it worthwhile to have weeks of prohibition of gatherings just for the sake of a few hundred returnees? I think the housewives have got a point here. What is your philosophy? Thank you, Doctor Zheng, for your question. I think at this moment, for our anti epidemic work, there are two major objectives. First, we want to prevent the local spread of the disease as a result of imported cases. Second, for local transmission, we want to slow the pace. So in terms of enhanced testing, in terms of containing the uh confirmed cases so that they will be admitted to hospital for isolation. So housewives are saying that you stop them from coming. Uh then we don't have any additional cases of con- uh confirmed infection. Well, we have also got some locally transmitted cases in addition to imported cases. To stop the uh local transmission, we are advocating social distancing. And that's why we have the two regulations. Ten seconds left. I urge the bureau to consider the following. We have got advertisements on the front page of a number of major papers. That is, the C E should have cash handouts to the employees directly. I think it is fair. Stavely, time is running out. I have submitted a motion. I'm not sure if I get time, get to my turn to do so. What I want to say is that uh it is suspected that a lawmaker has breached the prohibition on gathering regulation and came up with an untruthful explanation. This is a bad example for public who would like to exercise self discipline to follow the law. I urge the administration to give a detailed explanation about the details of the law and follow this up seriously so as to tell us that everybody is equal before the law. And then the public would know that we need to be cautious about the preventive measures. Now, my question is, we have got false negative uh test results. There was this old man at Port Ho Hospital who got infected. Probably he was infected by somebody who had an negative, false negative result earlier on. So this is worrying. What can we do to make sure that we can eliminate the false negative test results? Doctor Wong, please, from CHP. Thank you. For false negative test results, it may be due to different reasons. First of all, the taking of the specimen. Of course, healthcare workers would do their best, would follow the procedures. But then it is possible that the specimen is such that the time or the place that is taken, it is not right on the right spot. And then uh during the early onset of a disease, uh the viral load may be too low for detection. And it depends on the clinical judgment, if it is still unsure. Even though there is a negative test result, we would want to redo the test. Mister Kwong, I made a telephone call earlier on, and then I came back, and then Houghton Chow agitated us in the Democratic Camp. We don't know that we are having a HSP meeting. We thought it's a. A special meeting against Tanya Chan. Well, we try not to name and shame you. You colluded with CY Learn. Many people were watching this live broadcast. Now, the beauty parlors were surprised to see that they have to be closed. And the bar industry is having difficulties. For the others, I don't care about them. For Houghton Chow, I have to pinpoint you. You've been colluding with CY Learn, that's already a lot of trouble. Why don't you focus on livelihood issues? Chen Ha Yan said that we should set aside politics, we should focus on livelihood. I've only got two minutes. What about the second round of anti epidemic fund? Everybody is losing the means of livelihood. So are you interested in politics more than anti epidemic funds? I have been trying to be polite towards you. I think Secretary is happy because I spent all my two minutes on criticizing you. Houghton Chow, I don't think you should. Have such an approach. Now, he's trying to get political gains out of this, saying that nobody is here. Who are from the Democratic Camp. Try to reflect upon yourself, you colluded with CY Learn, and yet you come here to talk about anti epidemic efforts. Secretary, many people watching the live broadcast, they're waiting for the second round of anti epidemic funds. We want to know if you can give us some good news. No time for her to give a reply. Christopher Zhang. Chair, yesterday. We had a video conferencing call gathering ten twenty stakeholders in the financial services industry. So for Fernando Zhang, learn from our experience and follow our practice, it is very safe. I am not interested whether Tanya Chan was having a meeting or having a party. But virus won't distinguish, make a distinction between laypeople or lawmakers. What she did was. Something that carries a risk. If some of us get infected, others may prevent it from having meetings. In other words, it is an activity of high risk. So by having such a gathering, what sort of risks is imposed? And if somebody breached the law, what is the action? Secretary, if many people are gathering together, of course, it will. Erode our efforts to fight the epidemic. It goes against our objective. Five nine nine F, five nine nine G are the two new regulations to make sure that we keep social distancing. For the two pieces of regulation, if you breach them, there is a penalty, there is a fine or even imprisonment. Under five nine nine G, the regulation says that in addition to a fine or imprisonment, you may also get a fixed penalty ticket. Last to ask questions, Alice Mac, one minute only. I don't agree with Houghton Chow. The pandemics supported Tanya Chan, they only distance themselves from Lam Che Kean, the steppler. Ask them the question, politics or epidemic, anti epidemic? Fernando Zhang talked about public health, we are concerned about public health, so we don't want people like Tanya Chan doing that. Preventing the close of the outbreak. Now, even if you have a lot of funds under the anti epidemic fund, employees are having a hard time. You shouldn't interrupt me. They like to ask people to shut up whenever they are no. They cannot convince us. They think that they can shout at us and then prevail above us. We don't want another cluster like Tanya Chan's. We hope that the outbreak will go away, and then we can resume our normal work. Thank you, we have to hand over the venue by two o'clock, so we can't continue. We have got two motions, but we haven't got time to proceed with them. I will refer them to the Secretariat, and they will be attached as part of our minutes. Thank you for your attendance, thank you, public officers.